One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear and Father, we love you so much and we are so honored to be able to come before you, Father God, and to call you our God. We thank you for the relationship that we can have with you and how we can have this open line of communication. And that us being so small and you being so big and powerful and eternal and almighty, you hear our prayers. We thank you for this district and what it means to each one of us, Father God. I pray that as we end this school year, that you be with the teachers and the students, the administration, the staff, Father God, and the parents. I pray your blessings upon this district, that as we break for summer, that it be a good summer. And that as we start the school year, another year from now, Father God, that you bless that as well, Lord. Give us wisdom tonight and discernment to help us make the right decisions and do it according to your will. We love you and we thank you so much for Jesus, we pray these things in his name. Amen.
Hey Desiree, we're all here in the local permits. Okay, welcome. This is our time for, in our meeting for open forum, and we invite whoever wants to speak to speak. Just know we aren't able to provide feedback or answer any questions, but we definitely welcome anyone who wants to speak. And Miss Cheek? I think you are on.
She brings an arm.
I know.
We love this time of year, every year that we get to come and tell y'all thank you for your encouragement and support. Our DI program, we worked with a little over 120 kids this year, and we had six qualify for global finals after winning at regionals and state, and we have three that chose to move forward. We have had a team of seniors this year that decided they wanted to graduate. They've been a Wile E. Bulldog since kindergarten and they were going to end being a Wile E. Bulldog. So Detective Ducks, if y'all will come forward. Detective Ducks started out in fourth grade and last year won sixth place in the world in the engineering challenge, and they decided to switch things up. And this year, they're competing in the high school secondary level challenge. So we have our Detective Ducks here and they are, where's the coaches? Always hiding. So we have Regina here and Leanne Tucker that have been working with these joyful humans in their high school and junior high years, and so we're very appreciative of their investment and the talent of our community.
So Ms. Cheek, how many years have y'all been going to globals now in a row, I think?
This is 25.
Wow. That's awesome.
We broke that wall. We figured out what makes a team stand out in teamwork, conflict resolution, and being original, being innovative. So, very excited.
That's cool.
Well, congratulations, y'all could do us that. Leaving on Tuesday of next, uh, that?
Thursday, Thursday the 22nd. Yes, sir.
Well, good luck, gang.
All right. Thank y'all Detective Ducks.
Mr. Best, I'm sorry, Mr. Baker.
I'd also like to point out that this team did not want to break up as some are still in junior high and some are in high school. They decided they were a team in the beginning and they were going to stay a team. So we have some junior high kids that have stepped up to compete secondary level on that team. So very proud from West Junior High and the high school. All right, so our middle level team, this little team Screaming Beetle Tacos, also, I know there's a story behind every secret team name and some you don't want to know. But this particular team did the same thing. They've been a team for a couple of years and they did not want to break up. So this is a team of fifth graders, sixth graders, and a seventh grader.
Seventh grader or a fifth grader?
Isn't Noah a seventh grader? Oh, don't tell him I said that. Okay. He's a sixth grader. He looks like an eighth grader, but he's obviously a sixth grader. Okay. This team won third place in the engineering challenge of the world last year, and we were very excited to see them cross the stage. And this year, they also decided to mix things up and they are working in the scientific challenge. So, very excited. We're excited that Coach Dad, which is Matt Oliver, has joined us again this year with Angel Buck and myself, working with the kids.
Congratulations.
Sharp group of kids.
That's awesome.
And thanks to our great music program, Wiley West Intermediate. These kids know everything about the Beatles and Beatles song history, which is, goes to part of their name. All right, and then we have some brand new kids making their first debut to globals. A team of vivacious girls known as the Golden Girl Gang. And obviously with softball and all kinds of things happening, we do not have everybody here, but we have a team member from East Intermediate that's a fourth grader, Sadie Hanner, and then we have these three girls from the West Intermediate. And so we are so proud of them and they chose the fine arts challenge. So, we wish them all the best.
Are there any coaches for this?
Oh. The coaches are very important, yes. No, not tonight. Very busy, very busy.
Good luck.
So, we do have a Facebook page, Wiley ISD Destination Imagination, and we'll be posting the kids' adventures, meeting other teams from around the world, and how they're doing. So we hope we have good news to share with y'all in June. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else? Okay. The first approval of minutes for the previous meeting, has everybody gotten a chance to look over them? Are there any objections? Okay, then we'll approve them as inns. And then we'll move on to consent agenda.
Catherine's got the bills for you. Top of that, Catherine.
I know, it's hard to follow. Goodness. Okay, all right. Starting with the bills on eight. Just our big ticket items again this month are our usual, of course, we have our bus repairs and maintenance, Amazon purchases, our utilities, our fuel, our food service purchases, Hendrick, who we pay OT and our PT services to. We have some curriculum, some lows, and some payroll. So I'm just going to kind of run through and touch base on a few of those. Of course, Amazon, it is a one that's repeated every month, but you know, they've been an easy, convenient way, just like for all of us at home, to make purchases, and they make it really simple in our system. And so, of course, we have our instruction athletics, I mean, building supplies come from there, security supplies, all kinds of things every month that we have with them. So that's always one of our top purchases for the month. Then again, or then down on page eight, ByteSpeed. We're partnering with TSTC for a cybersecurity program, and so there were some specific computer requirements that they needed for this program, for the students that were going to be a part of this. So we purchased those, a little over 19,000 with our CTE funds from the state.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is our first year, next year, to do cybersecurity, which will be exciting.
It's big, yeah.
It's really exploding, so, good job. Kudos.
Like I mentioned, Hendrick Medical Center, every month, we pay for our OT and PT services for our children. And then we also contract out one of our athletic trainers with them, so that's constantly one of our higher purchases of a month. Then on bottom of page nine, the Hefton Mifflin or Hoffton Mifflin, they are some curriculum supplies, which is our Read 180. And the reason we're purchasing those out of our general fund is they are a part, or this does qualify for like a compensatory ed kind of purchase, because we use them for accelerated instruction and reading remediation at our junior highs. So, like I've told, I know y'all have heard before, we have to spend certain amount of money in certain areas, and we have to meet a minimum threshold. So purchases like that help us meet that in those areas. Then over on page 10, we have our lows, which is a repeated expense every month, but on this one, out of the 19,5, 17,000 of that is part of our bond. And then, of course, we're always purchasing, you know, custodial supplies, even athletics, maintenance, all kinds of things from them every month. Our payroll for April was a little over 3.2 million. We had a few payoffs and some stipends going out this month, so it's a little higher than where we've been in our past few months. And then, we did purchase a walk-in freezer. As our district grows, we are qualifying for more commodities and more, kind of, at a bigger amount. And so, to benefit from that, we need somewhere to store it. You know, we're not going to be able to take advantage of that without having the storage. So thankfully, that fund, that kind of stands alone, it's done well, and so we were able to purchase that with their food service funds and get that for them. And then the rest, starting on page 12, we have some visa expenses continuing through page 13. Are there any questions? Bills? Moving on to our bond. Of course, we started with 186 million, and then at the end of, by the end of March, we were left with a little over 172 million, and that's taking into account, of course, interest earned. And then, we wanted to go ahead, we did add the line for this, the rebateable arbitrage that was calculated in August, or as of August 31st. So we'll have a new number, you know, going forward after August, but we just kind of wanted to put that out there so that's visible. I know we talk about it every month, but it's there on paper now to be kind of seen that we will pay that portion back.
So let me, let me just, a little reminder about the arbitrage rate. Remember that as through these years, I think our first milestone is five years into it, and it's, it's a number that's going to fluctuate depending on the interest that we earned above that 4.06. So if it ever drops below that 4.06 is the interest we're getting, then some of these, that amount, that 354,000 will fill in that layer. It'll just be less that we're having to pay back the, I guess, the feds. Is that the fed? I think it's the feds on that. But, you know, that, that number, even though that's what, that we had it audited and that's what they said it was, that number will change every year. We'll have it audited every year and they'll, that way we don't get in a bind, spend some money that we end up needing later, so.
So as y'all know, projects are really going, and so those bills are coming in. So for the month of April, we were a little over 2.9 in expenses there, which that's staying pretty steady, probably going to stay that way for a while as we continue to progress. So that leaves us with a little over 169 million left in our bond. Moving on to cash. As of April 30th, our overall cash balance was a little over 21 million, keeping in mind that, of course, that is, does include our debt service, which is a little over 6 million. So without that, at 15 million, keeping in mind, of course, we have our August payment, our August bond payment coming out that's a little under 5 million, 4.8 million, and, but compared to where we were as of April last year, I mean, I think we have done, we're doing really good, or we're sitting in a good place. 13 million is where we were last year at the end of April, so. Okay, any questions with that? Expense report, just looking at the overall for expenditures year-to-date, sitting at 68%, or little over 68, and compared to last year, that is lower than the 74 where we were last year at this time. Of course, everything's going on, it's a busy time of year, so, but here soon, it'll kind of slow down. For some. Not for me. Okay, on to revenue. Overall, our revenue, we're at 72% and compared, which is up compared to last year, where we're just right under 67% on the year. Any questions on those? Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the bills, respect.
On favor? Okay. Moving on, considering selection of auditor.
Yes, the last several years, we have been using ITH Bailey to perform our financial audit. They do a great job. We're pleased with how they interact with staff and to get information, you know, that's part of the process. They're always working with you to get more information. I will say this, it seems like more and more of the audit is taking place electronically now than it's ever been done, and the actual amount of information they request, it's paper record, is very small in comparison. So, we would, we would recommend that we continue to use ITH Bailey for our auditors.
I'll make a motion to approve ITH Bailey to perform the financial audit for the 2024-25 budget year. On favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Consider approval of the TIPS contract for the high school tennis building sewer line.
Okay, one of the last things, we're not, not quite to the finish line yet, but we're about to the sewer line. So, that, we, come on. We'll have to work with my writers, that material is not very good.
We're surrounded, too.
All right, here we go. Try to gather yourself for that. We have, one of the last things we have to do is get the sewer line put in, and we've been gathering information. Gallagher has approached several contractors to get prices. Jenna, you may want to speak to this, just as, in general, they are acting as the, basically the manager of this project, and we're contracting with Gallagher.
Yes, sir.
But Jerry Hallmark, who some of you may know, Jerry's done a lot of housing development, putting in sewer lines and things like that. So he, this one got a little tricky because we're going under Antley Road, and some of the folks that we'd hoped could do it, couldn't do it till you get some of the other, they were substantially less than a couple of other, I don't know if you're calling them a bids quotes, maybe?
Quotes. So, yeah, we, we think we've got good pricing for you from Mr. Hallmark on behalf of his company, and so we're going to work with them to get the work done and pull the permits, and I believe he said, end of this month is when he would start work. So we'll, we'll go ahead and jump on getting the permits and the reviews done with the city. Hibbs and Todd did the plans, and the goal is to get you up and running with your sewer and get your, your project done during the summer so that you're, you're ready to go for, for the fall. So Gallagher is going to, since we're already out there on the high school project, we're going to just make sure that goes smoothly for you.
And this one, because I feel like I got this question over the past week about the tennis thing. So, is it, once we do that in this May, I may be doing the Bron projects, but it kind of goes that, are we going to be able to get more parking there once this is done? Is that a main?
So that's, that is, I think that's a related question.
Is that going to be able to get done? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so that will be first. And he's going to be, he really thinks, I don't know if he talked to you all about how, he thought he could get in and out of there pretty quickly, at least around the tennis building. It's going to take a little while, longer, but I think within a couple of weeks, he'll be through with that.
I think, yeah, that's, that's what we're expecting, and hopefully everything goes smoothly out there at the road, too, and, and then, you know, especially with traffic being slower during the summer and not as many folks coming in and out of there.
And so I have gotten with Hibbs and Todd originally, so let me, let me just say, originally, the plan for the parking lot was to be that rectangle, and it really, I don't know if you remember, on the south end of that cleechy where it was originally, that was going to be the end of the parking lot. I asked them to look at going a little farther south, and then also going a little west, you know, where the, they put the sod on the south end of the tennis courts to run parallel with that, because what we have seen, and y'all have seen the same thing, is when you get tennis going, softball going, baseball going, sometimes one of any of those can overwhelm that parking lot. The thing that has slowed them down is because we, when I talk to them, it doesn't make sense for us not to tie those two parking lots together, which means they're going to rework the elevations on that softball parking lot. The crown of that land is right down that road, really right at the edge of where the softball field is. You know, it drops pretty hard to the west. It also drops as you're going east from there, so that's the crown. So they're going to rework that drainage, or that elevation to get the proper drainage. So that has slowed us down on getting the parking lot situation rectified. Now, when I talk to Jordan Hibbs, we still think we're going to be able to get it done this summer. Oh, I hope so. Because I don't think we want to go into the school year with that parking lot done. So, that's, that's, he, he did think he could get it done, but we were slowed down by them changing those elevations, so. And then me adding that part over there by the sod on the tennis courts, so.
So this will just be for the utility line itself for the sewer?
Right. So, if we, if we can do that, I feel like Jerry will do a great job.
What's the estimated cost?
Right now, you have it in front of you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know, I didn't know if y'all had seen that. I didn't know if that had come around, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that shouldn't have.
The contract, the contract's going to be for 176,882 dollars. We did build in a little bit of a contingency in case there's some things that we encounter out there anytime you open up the ground. You may cross a line or two or do something that, you know, you don't expect. So right now, the, the total that we're bringing to the board for approval is 176,882 dollars. And then any of that contingency that we don't use, we'll just not bill it and goes right back into your pot.
And so, the other quotes we got were closer to 300,000.
Yes, sir.
So we feel really, really good about that. Okay?
Motion to approve TIPS contract with Delaware District.
On favor? Okay.
Yes, perfect.
Jenna, do you want to go first? So that we can get on the road. That's why I was like, stay there.
So, we had, I guess, Mr. Light, I don't want to steal your thunder.
No, no, you can steal all the thunder you want. So you do have, that you have.
Yes, you have an update, and I'm going to call an audible on it, too, because Mr. Light got a call right before the meeting that we are expecting to receive steel for the elementary next week, so that's huge to have that delivery coming in. Now, nobody do a rain dance right about now, because I'd love to see some steel go up on that site. They have been making a lot of progress around the gym with the insulated concrete form work, and they've been doing a bunch of the prep work for the foundation, so, and all the underground utility work is, is really in great shape over there. At the Voag, they have been working on the masonry and some of the electrical and mechanical roughing, they've got the underground utilities in, so it's also making progress, and we're working through any of the coordination and construction with CADCO.
When is the steel supposed to be in on that one? Because that's kind of still a.
Yeah, that's, that's still, the, the biggest hiccup is the, the Voag mechan, or the metal building manufacturer, and right now, they're saying June.
So they have said June for quite a while.
Yes, they've held, they've held with June, and I'm still, again, I, I've, I've told you that I will keep giving you updates until that's out there, and then I will be glad to have that behind us, because that, that has been a disappointment for us and for, we have another district that's struggling with this particular exact issue. So, we are, we're expecting June, but I'll be here every meeting until I don't have to tell you anything about that one again. The, the best news is the high school plans for the band hall addition, the storm shelter slash gym and athletic locker room areas, and then the classroom expansion. Those are all packaged together, and those are advertising on the street into this week on Friday. So the dates for that one right now is going to be, the advertisement is running, the pre-proposal will be May 28th, and then the bid date is June 17th, and we'll bring that to your July board meeting after we've evaluated all those bids. We don't like to try to straddle the July 4th holidays for the bidders because they get a little distracted, they go and they have a little fun, and I, I don't want their numbers to go all wonky on us. So we're going to get them where they can look at it focused before they go on holiday for July 4th, and then we'll bring it to you on, to your July board meeting. So we've been working with CADCO, we've also been coordinating with the city about how we'll put the permitting together to try and get you into those projects as quick as possible. Even with what's happened with the Voag metal building delay, we've got all of that factored in to try and get the best solution to get you access to all those facilities as soon as possible. Any questions on that one? Okay. And then, the intermediate school design. CADCO's working on that also, on the intermediate school expansion, and they have given us a tentative date. We're going to watch for it in August for those plans to come to us, and then we'll package those and put those out as soon as y'all say go. And if you're, if you're ready for, for us to advertise those, we'll try to optimize it while you have all these folks working on your projects in town, because they can just move from one project to the next and give you good pricing, and then we can also draw more people in while we've got a lot of activity here. Any questions on intermediate? And then, summer renovations, we have Wiley inner, Wiley West Intermediate flooring improvements and the paint, and both of those are moving forward, and as soon as school's out, we're going to hit that hard and get in and get out of there.
And we've been working with Mr. Boone to get everything lined out as far as moving furniture out, and I think we got a little more clarification on that today, so, I think we're going to be in a good spot there.
Okay.
Awesome.
Any questions on those?
Now, I have a question, I think it's more, you questioned, y'all can both. Are, are we, is that realistic? And I, I'm just summing up, I don't know, coming to my head, is it realistic to think that we can have the funds to do all of those at once? Does that make sense? I know the, the goal was, is over like a four or five-year project, so like, are we going to have the ability to realistically do all three of those projects? With the interest that we're earning and?
Sure. So, right now, again, remember the, the original bids that we put out for the high school, I'm sorry, the Voag and the elementary were 42-ish?
All in, you have, you got it on your sheet, you've got the 42 and you've got to think a 10. For the Voag and the elementary, should be up there around 50, 52-ish.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
Because they were combined.
That was just the one.
That was just the one.
And so then you say the, now the high school, square footage-wise, I mean, I, we're estimating we were going to be still in really good shape around the, I guess we're not supposed to say.
We're not supposed to be talking about pricing right before you go out on the street. But right now, our numbers, we're, we're watching the estimates and we think we're in okay.
We will do all three of those and still be comfortably within the amount that we have drawn on the bank right now.
I would agree. I think you're, I think you're in a good spot without having to go out and sell any more of your bond.
Now, one of the exercises we've been through, too, is looking at all the other things, like the additional parking lot costs and everything. And, and we still, right now, we're in good shape. Now, if we get to the point where we will be pushing towards that, you know, because you're, you're making those payments monthly, we will have the opportunity to look down the road and say, oh, in a year, we're going to need additional funds. And, and then we'll, if that happens, we would get with our financial advisor and come up with a game plan to target the best time to go out for, to sell the bonds. You know, you've already been approved for those, those expenditures, but now the actual sale of those bonds would take place at a time when maybe the people are hungry that are looking to buy those, and so there's, those people in that world have a strategy and. And so there's, those, those people in that world have a, a strategy in place for all that, so.
Okay.
I think right now, those projects are in good shape.
Right.
Did you, you did say something about the intermediate or did it not?
The summer and the design by CADCO, yes, both.
Okay.
So.
So that's all the big rocks?
Yeah.
That's really exciting.
Yeah, I mean, really, y'all, y'all have knocked it out of the park with the projects and the way that you're feeding, you know, the market and it's responding well, and we're gonna hope that we continue that with the next round of bids. So, um, like I said, nobody do any rain dances and, you know, spread the word. We'll, we'll put a lot of public posts out for, um, the bids when they advertise, but if you have any folks, just send them our way and we'll make sure they get the bid documents.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so she mentioned the rain dances, of course, we, state of Texas got good rain last year, last week, right? Uh, that pushed all of the Paragon Sports projects back a week or so. There, they haven't gotten here yet and they're probably gonna be a little delayed. They still don't, they don't think that will overall impact their timeline much. They're on a pretty tight timeline anyway, but, uh, you know, right now, that's, as soon as they get here, then their plans, uh, are to go in and take out that existing track and existing field and, and get right on it. And as soon as possible, they'll start doing the electrochemical injections, uh, to, and that only goes under the track. That's to, to harden that, that underground under the track. You know, the field, uh, then will be sodded as soon as they feel like they can get to it. So then it'll have the longest amount of time to, for its roots to take hold. Uh, also at West Junior High, other than the track and field are the restrooms, we'll be doing flooring and tile and we'll, uh, now the tile I'm talking about will be on the walls in the restrooms. We'll also be working on the, uh, the field house, uh, and also at West Junior High, a lot of things going on over there. The cabling, uh, the intr- infrastructure at the West Junior High. They had some things they did in building one, they have finished that. And they'll start building two as soon as school's out, because they'll be taking all that cabling out of building two. Uh, high school, uh, we have ordered, uh, the six hundred hall monitors, remember that was our, uh, th- those were the first monitors that we put out, there were touchscreen monitors, not the projection system. And, uh, when we did those, those, uh, those monitors are the smallest in the district. They're beginning to fail and it, and they're also not as, uh, useful being a smaller screen. Uh, so we're, we're, we're replacing those. The HVAC controls, uh, hasn't changed much, they, they have, uh, mentioned, uh, I think in our last, uh, meeting that they were ordering equipment, the equipment has not arrived yet, but they're gonna wait until school is over to start pulling wire to all those HVAC units and, and to their controls in each room. Uh, and she mentioned the inter, West Intermediates, uh, chomping at the bits. Uh, playgrounds have been delivered and we'll be installing those this summer. And then the parking lots, uh, also, that was, uh, mentioned and we'll, uh, basically what, uh, Jordan Hibbs and I had the conversation about is we're gonna do as much as we can do this summer and then we'll have another project next summer. So, just so anybody listening to that knows, and they say, well, why haven't you done the parking lot behind, uh, north of the dog? By the doghouse or in the visitor parking lot or anywhere at the high school? Anything that's gonna be around the construction would be subject to really heavy equipment and it would not make sense for us to put in new paving and then be, get right on top of it. So we're not, not gonna even attempt that, so.
What's your, what's your priority for parking lots minus that?
Well, so the West Junior High, we hit West Junior High with a plumbing project right at the end of the summer. We damaged it pretty good, survived, and, uh, uh, so that's, that whole front parking lot is the first goal at the West Junior High. The West Elementary, to be quite honest, that is, that parking lot, the original part of that parking lot is really thin. As we looked at that, they, they did take cores, but we, we feel like that was chip sealed, which is pretty amazing that we got as much time on that parking lot as we did. That, you know, that's forty years, uh, it's incredible. Uh, but it, there's not, I mean, if you were to go in and scratch off the top layer, you'd go right to base. And so it's, it's time for that, uh, as well. Uh, the, we do have some bigger thoughts about, for example, the West Intermediate. If you've been over there, the, uh, a lot of the car, cars coming in, come in on the east side of that campus and then getting a line. We are looking at how we can extend, or not extend, that's not the right word, get more lane to park. So, so when they're coming in from the east, going west, uh, we'll, we think we're gonna bend it back pretty quickly to the north, create two lines im- immediately and go deep, as deep as our property line will allow us, and then go over. So you get a lot more queuing space. You know, queuing space is the big thing now in the, in the schools. That's why they've done, uh, like east intermediate, that, that parking situation has been greatly enhanced by that long drive off of Old Elaine, that's helped a lot. So we're trying to get some more queuing space for those folks at West, uh, Intermediate, so. So there's, there are some prior, I don't know that we'll be able to get to all of that. As a matter of fact, he felt like the West Intermediate was in better shape than West Elementary, so we'll see what we can get done.
Anyone else?
Thank you all. It's, it's a lot happening, it is, it's really good stuff.
Good stuff.
Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it, Jim.
Thank you, ma'am, be careful.
All right, principals reports.
Who's that? Principals. Mr. Good. Oh, what is it? Yes, you have your principal's hands out here, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, y'all, we have, uh, not very many more days left. We have eight more days, uh, after, uh, today, we're down to eight days. Uh, hey, the fifth six weeks, uh, ended. We only had, one thing I'm really proud of, we only had one student who failed more than one class. We didn't have very many kids who failed any at all and only one kid fell more than one, that's a pretty awesome stat. Uh, we completed star testing in April. All of that, as, as, uh, I like to tell the teachers, the haze in the barn. There's not a whole lot we can do now, 'cause we've, we've done all the testing and we'll await, uh, the scores. We started our academic awards, we did eighth grade academic award today. Uh, we'll do seventh grade on Wednesday and sixth grade on Thursday. Uh, you see the number of students there who are, who will be getting an award per grade. About sixty percent of our students will be getting an academic award, so we're super proud of them. Uh, next week, on the twenty-first and twenty-second, that's Tuesday and Wednesday, we'll take end of six weeks exams. So hopefully keep them engaged all the way, uh, to the end. Uh, you see our attendance there, uh, it actually has been really good this last about nine weeks, so.
About to say, it looks.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's been really great about the last nine weeks. Uh, some things that have been happening, uh, since the last time I stood in front of you. Uh, our tennis team completed, uh, their spring team schedule and they went undefeated, so kudos to Coach Fisher and the, and the tennis squad. Uh, and all of this, and I'm gonna tell you, is not on here, but our lead students went to the ECC in East Elementary about a week or so ago and they, in class, wrote children's books and they took those and they read them to the, to the littles. And, um, from all, uh, reports I got, it was a pretty awesome, uh, morning. Uh, our soccer teams completed their seasons last Thursday. We had our fourth annual art walk, uh, thank you, Ms. Donaway, for being there. Uh, but we had an awesome event, again, that's one of my favorite hours of the whole school year. So kudos to, uh, Ms. Jones for that art walk and to all of our hundreds and hundreds of students who had art displayed. Uh, are, we took some students, or Ms. Jones took students' work to the Junior Vase. It's spelled vase, but you're supposed to say vase, I'm told. The Junior Vase Competition, we had nine students who earned medals. Uh, four of them earned like the advanced medal, so we're really proud of those kids. Uh, Thursday of this week, we will have our second annual teacher-student doubles tennis tournament. And that just kinda takes place throughout the day. Uh, eighth grade tennis students get to choose a teacher to be their partner and, uh, they just kinda go out there, they have, there's a schedule and they just run out there and they play and it's pretty fun. And by about two o'clock, we'll crown a champion, but, uh, I think there are maybe sixteen teams that are playing in this thing, so. It's, it'll be fun, it's just, hey, and the teachers, they, they're having practice sessions uh, the next couple of days, but, but the teacher, the teacher is paired with a student and it's a doubles competition, so it's, it's a really good time. Hey, our sixth grade teachers have done a great job this year, uh, with some incentives for things like classroom behavior, attendance, grades. And one of the big rewards, it happened the first week of April, we had the Texas A&amp;M Chemistry Road Show came to the school. And this guy, I mean, if you wanna talk about a stereotypical traveling scientist, that's what this guy looked like. I mean, his hair was crazy and he was in tie dye, but for about an hour and a half, he put on quite a show with a bunch of chemical, uh, experiments and explosions and all kinds of cool stuff. So that, that was a fun, a fun morning for our sixth graders. Uh, we took our eighth graders on a college day a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they got a choice to tour one of three facilities, either Harden Simmons, the Texas Tech Health Science Center, or TSTC. And we really kind of about thirded them up and they all, they went to those places and it was a really, a really awesome time. Our band is playing right now in their spring concert. I would only miss that to come stand in front of you guys. And, um, I've gotten a couple of updates already that it's going pretty awesome. Hey, our band, I told our eighth grade parents this, this morning, I think if you, uh, drew a two-hundred mile circle around Abilene, Texas, that you would not find a better band inside that two-hundred miles than the Wiley East Junior High band. Hey, we do a lot of good things out there, that's, uh, one of the very best that we do. Our band is Unbelievable Miss Leets and Mr. De La Garza do a great job with them. Uh, we will do Outsiders Day on Thursday, the eighth graders read that novel, The Outsiders, and it's kinda become an annual event. They, they dress up as greasers or socias and we have a bunch of old cars that folks bring up and it's just kind of a, a fun day for our eighth graders. Uh, also this week, on Friday, is eighth grade fun day. On, uh, Monday of next week, we'll do some yearbook signing. Also on Monday of next week, we will have our last and final evening event, our choir concert over at the pack at six-thirty. Um, and then the end of year, our end of year staff meeting at the, uh, East Junior High will be on Friday, May the twenty-third. Uh, we have some awesome teacher of the year nominees this year, including Miss Leets, our band director, uh, Gatlin Martin, one of our coaches and PE teachers, Caitlin Savari is our, uh, choir, choir teacher. Bailey Goodenough is a coach and a US history teacher. And then our four finalists, uh, Jamie Dobie, another coach and a math teacher. Mara Evans is our, uh, academic coach, a faith nun, sixth grade math, and Jeanette Rodriguez is our algebra and eighth grade math. So one of those four, Dobie, Evans, Nun, or Rodriguez, will be our teacher of the year for this year. Hey, three coaches are nominated to be teachers of the year. Hey, coaches get a bad rap sometimes, well, you know, they're just a coach, so they can't be good teachers. Hey, we have three that are nominated to be teachers of the year, I think that's pretty cool. So kudos to, to all of these folks. Hey, we talked, we've been talking about building a boat all year. I've shared that with y'all multiple times, I've been wearing this bracelet since about August the third. And I brought the oar in and, uh, our boat builders of the month, uh, Miss Rodriguez, Miss Evans, Miss Leets, Miss Miller, Miss Morrow, Mr. Martin, Miss Reed and Miss Nun, those are the eight folks that were the boat builders of the year. And, uh, I write the Bulldog Facts to my staff every week, or I send them this, we do it every Friday. And their homework assignment for last week, I said, hey, send me, s- write something about what your boat looks like, that boat you've been building. They've been building a boat. And forty-one of them sent a response and I included it in the Bulldog Facts. And here were the themes that they wrote about, I'm not gonna read any of them to you, but here were the themes of the boats that they've been building in their classroom all year. Kindness, celebration, vulnerability, togetherness, family, hope, growth, perspective, inspiration, strength, resilience, gratefulness and love. So if you wonder what Wiley East Junior High students got this year, that's what they got. Hey, thank you, appreciate it.
And congrats to your wife, I guess she'll stick with us for four more years at least.
Will we run along? Thank you. She got a contract extension is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
All right, Wiley West. That was a big deal. Wiley West Junior High, uh, doing a lot of the same things Wiley East, so I'll go through it very quickly. Uh, our total student count is currently a thousand twenty-three. Our attendance, um, did ha- take a little hit in the Christmas time era, but we're getting back up there, we're at ninety-six point two overall, so I'm, I'm liking our attendance and how it's rising back up. Our lead, uh, students, um, are currently doing peer tutoring with our fifth and sixth grade classes every Wednesday. They also did, um, the book, they create a book about leadership skills and qualities and then they go to the elementary. So thank you, Ms. Besant, for allowing us to come to the elementary, um, and read those books to those students. Kindness Club, they honored our custodians and cafeteria staff this past week. Um, it was lunch hero day, uh, so, and then the caf, the custodians help a lot with the, in the cafeteria, so we just kinda lumped them in there as well. They fed them lunch, uh, the students wrote a bunch of kind notes about, uh, them and what they do on our campus and how they help us so much. So that was a good thing for them. And then also, our kindness club held a animal shelter drive and donated a lot of things to our animal shelter. So students, um, participated really well with that and, uh, we, local animal shelter got a lot of donations from our kindness club and Wiley West Junior High. Bulldog Bridge is, the May is a gold setting, so talking about setting goals for next year and continuing on to grow. Uh, we finished up star test, same as them. Uh, TMSCA, there's a few things here, band, choir and TMSCA, I think I missed, like, we were, that was happening and we didn't get to talk, like, right before I talked to y'all, that was about to happen last time, so I'm gonna mention those. TMSCA, uh, state results, Wiley West finished fifth overall in state, uh, tournament, uh, so it was really good. Our band concert scored ones on stage and one on sight reading, both the symphonic and the concert band. Uh, I think that's the thirtieth year over, uh, thirtieth year straight, uh, to do that in a row. Uh, spring concert, ours is actually tomorrow. Uh, choir, varsity boys, got sweepstakes, varsity girls got sweepstakes in UIL. Intermediate girls, division one and concert and, and two and sight reading. Uh, we also had a solo contest that they, we do in-house, uh, seventy-six singers performed and seventy received a division one rating. Uh, and the spring concert for the choir, uh, is on May twentieth. Uh, we finished up soccer, uh, played east, our last game, uh, last week on Thursday. Our girls had an undefeated season, our boys went three and two, so great job there with soccer. Uh, swim and tennis just finished up their spring seasons. We also had teacher appreciation week last week, um, so did a lot of things for the teachers. I get Mr. Burger drinks for them, uh, PTO fed us on Wednesday, PTO's amazing, we have a great PTO. You know, at the high school, you don't get the PTO things when I was at the high school for eleven years, but at the junior high and below, PTO is amazing. So we appreciate, uh, everyone that's a part of PTO and what they do for our schools. Uh, Wiley West Junior High Family Meal I did on Friday, uh, some of y'all, uh, I, I gave you a little short notice, but some of y'all made it out to, to eat with us on Friday, so I appreciate that. Also, we, uh, did snow cones on Friday for the teachers and I invited the bus and maintenance and all them people to come, uh, 'cause they do a lot for our district and so I appreciate them by buying them a snow cone on Friday. We had twelve students at Junior Vase Place.
Vase.
Vase, sorry. I'm country, it's vase.
You're listening, you're gonna.
Uh, award ceremony, we're actually doing tomorrow, uh, and I'm gonna do all, I started this, I think, last year. Last year, I believe, I start, I might have done it two years ago, but I started doing them all in one day, so we're gonna do it all tomorrow, all award ceremonies. Seventh grade at nine-ten, eighth grade at ten-oh-three, sixth grade at twelve-thirty and fifth grade at one-forty. Um, and each grade has, um, over a hundred, sixth grade was a little below a hundred, but all the other ones had over a hundred students being, receiving academic awards. Art walk is May fifteenth, fifth grade spring music show, um, which is called Bulldogs Got Talent, that is May fifteenth as well during the day. Sixth or eighth grade fun days are all on May sixteenth. The eighth grade, we take them off campus, uh, we go to the zoo, uh, and we also rent out Dodge Jones Center for them to have, uh, a good time there for their last little thing they do. Um, they actually also had a, the pe, uh, the parents threw a, uh, eighth grade dance this past, uh, Cinco de Mayo dance. So that was, I heard went really well, I actually was not there and the parents did it all, so it was a great thing. Um, let's see what else, fifth grade is gonna do their fun day on May nineteenth. Uh, and we also have outsiders day on May nineteenth and then we'll do our, uh, test on the twenty, uh, twentieth and twenty-first, like Mr. Goodenough. He already talked about all the building things going on. Uh, last day of school is May twenty-second and it's an early release day. And we had a lot, I think I had maybe fifteen teachers that were nominated for teacher of the year, but our top five for them to vote on, uh, now just going alphabetical order, were Amy Eric, which is their second year teacher. She taught for twenty-something years in AISD and now she's here with us and doing an amazing job. Uh, Megan Boyd, uh, doing an amazing job for us in eighth grade English. Shelley Brotherton has amazing job in math. Uh, who am I missing? Angie Kinley's in fifth grade, English, does amazing job. And then Ms. Teeman, which was.
Thank you.
All right. Rockin' and rollin' at Wiley High School. Feels like the plane is landing, and so we're excited about that. Our golf team went to the state meet, their first trip to the five-A state meet, and earned eighth place. They kinda got the, well, all of them got the short end of the stick because they didn't get to play two rounds, and we're a second-round team, and so, I mean, we would've won it had it not been for that rain, but, you know. Um, we would have Mr. White. I was banking on that second round. Anyway, we, they got second place at the regionals, which took them on to state. Powerlifting, we had several go to state powerlifting. On the girls' side, we had Kylie finish second, and then Ari finish fourth. And tennis, Wiley tennis, one district, every player or team advanced to regionals, and then last week, they competed in the regional meet, and three players will advance to the UIL state tournament. Hope won girls' singles, and then Kate and Steven were the runner-up in regionals, and so they'll advance to state and they'll play in San Antonio. At the end of this week, our gymnastics team, as a team, girls' team, earn their place, or in their spot at state, and so they competed, I think, two weekends ago and earned twelfth place at the state gymnastics meet. Baseball is still rockin' and rollin', and so they will play in the regional semifinals this week, Thursday and Friday, against Grapevine High School in Graham. And then softball finished their season as by district champions. We also had a track triple jumper go to state, Andre, and I think Andre finished seventh at state. Is that right? Seventh? Okay. Arts, we all learn something every single day, and today we learned we pronounce it vase. So we took, thank you, Mr. Goodenough. We took eleven pieces of art to state vase and brought home six medals for their work. Their work really is incredible. There is one particularly chilling piece that she actually, I made her write about it to get permission to use it, and it is about school violence, but it has our library in the background of it, and it's just so realistic, and it's chilling and incredible, and so the piece that she wrote for me was also awesome, which was completely unnecessary, but I wanted to hear her logic behind it. Theater varsity won, earned fourth place at the regional competition, missing state by two places, and that is just as subjective as complete, because I think they should've won, Mr. White, also, and gone on to states. UIL academics, they're headed to state. I think that group leaves on the eighteenth, and so after baccalaureate Sunday, I think they leave and go to Austin for the regional or the state meet. They were the regional runner-up sweepstakes champion, one of only two teams that scored over two-hundred points. Eight Bulldogs advanced to state. The spelling team actually won state and then several runner-ups, and so that's all really exciting. With all of that, I'm gonna hop over. I think it's important to note that we're sitting right now, through swimming and basketball, ranked eighteen in the Lone Star Cup out of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight five-A school districts, which is pretty incredible, because I remember about four years ago wondering, like, where are we gonna hide kids so we can go back to four? Don't quote me. Wiley never did that. She's been writing things down. Wiley, Wiley never did that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, but I think it's awesome how far our programs have come and how we have just risen to the occasion, and we'll continue to do so and make a name for ourselves out here in West Texas. So CTE has been awesome. We graduated from the Next You program, which that's the DCOA program, where they sponsor our programs and then work with them to get industry positions. They donate or give, invest, actually invest seventeen-hundred dollars into each kiddo that is in that program to buy either equipment, or it can be curriculum, but we use it for equipment and tools for our electrical program and our mechanical, our AGMEC program. And so eighteen students finished and completed that program, actually, twenty-six students finished and completed that program and graduated at DCOA's ceremony last week. CNA, we're gonna have thirty more CNAs at the end of this year. They're wrapping up testing right now, but they'll all pass. In the four years since we've had that program, we have certified eighty students to become CNAs. Farm Tech will have five students sit for their Farm Tech test. We have two students that are gonna sit for their CVA test, and then we have four that I got this summer afterward that will sit for their educational aid exam. A bunch of those, they have to wait till they're eighteen to actually sit for the exam, to get those licensing. And then tons and tons of other industry-based certifications, but those are the actual licensing certifications that we'll have at the end of this school year. FFA, the Cotton and Horse team traveled to the state FFA contest. The Cotton team placed seventh out of a hundred-and-fifty-five teams. HOSA went to the state HOSA meet in Round Rock, and Tazeed Gruel finished in the top ten in the chemistry, anatomy, and physiology competition. Speaking of Tazeed, she is the salutatorian, then Justice McGuinness has been named the valedictorian. That's always fun to announce. We have a senior class meeting, and we end it by announcing the top twenty-five, which I always think they should already know that, but they don't, and so it ends up being a really exciting thing. I think it just solidifies where they ended. And so we'll celebrate those top twenty-five at the Rotary Club Top Fifty banquet, but we only take twenty-five on Thursday night. Other news, our yearbooks are in, and they are beautiful. Ms. Kirby has taken over, she does our yearbook now, and her heart is in communicating, written communication and journalism, and so it truly has become this journalistic piece. This year's, I don't know if I'm allowed to say, she has a big reveal tomorrow, so I feel like I shouldn't say it, because if I say something I'm not supposed to say, I'll get in trouble by Ms. Kirby, and nobody wants that. Anyway, so that's tomorrow. She'll pre, we have a yearbook assembly. She presents the yearbook. They honor a staff member that the students pick to honor with presenting the yearbook. Last year, it was Ms. Bacon, and so that's a big surprise also, and so students will get their yearbooks tomorrow. We also have Teacher of the Year nominations, and they will find out, that teacher will find out on the twenty-third, but our three finalists were Mr. Garrett Dowell, who teaches honors rural geography, rural geography, and is our UIL lead. Mrs. Holly Kirby, who does our freshman seminar class, AP English III, and then yearbook, and then Ms. Teela Locker, who teaches our Bible class, and then our Principles of Health Science, and gets those kiddos started in our health science program, and they're all really awesome, and I am so glad that our staff recognizes and values what they do. And then we added an award this year that's just at the high school called Game Changer of the Year, and that could be any staff member that has made a positive impact and really made the pendulum swing another way. I know who won that, but really, there was just one that everyone kept nominating, so that means that that one really made a difference this year, and I'm excited to present that one with that award. Our Teachers of the Fifth Six Weeks, so Teacher of the Year and Game Changer are nominated by staff. Teacher of the Six Weeks is nominated by students, which is fun to read their nominations, and so the Fifth Six Weeks winner was Mrs. Camp, who is the vase sponsor, and so her nominations were awesome to read also. Other fun things coming up, our senior activities coming up. We go to Six Flags on Friday. We have baccalaureate on Sunday. The seniors will walk all the camp, the campuses on Monday. We'll have graduation practice on the twentieth, followed by the picnic. And then something new that I hope all of you will come and do is a senior parade. The seniors all get to decorate their vehicle to symbolize either what they're doing after high school, their school, military, what they're going to do, and they wave, and then we end in the hue, and we have a slideshow of all their pictures, and then they each got to submit one picture to show up on the big screen at the hue, and so they get their last little hurrah on the football field. And then graduation will be on May twenty-third. Other things that I didn't put in here that I thought of, we also celebrated our teachers, our nurses. Mr. Mike Thompson, I don't think he got celebrated, but apparently Friday was communications day, so thank you for all your great communications. Our administrative assistant, you should've communicated about yourself.
I should've communicated about myself.
You should've communicated about yourself. Another thing I wanna say is Taffy, which is our future educators, they had a children's book drive, and then they chose a school that has remained unnamed, not our district, a school that they felt like was in need of children's books, and they took them to that school within Taylor County. Seven-hundred-and-twenty-five children's books they donated through a book drive to Taylor County Elementary School. And then the other thing I forgot, this just got thrown together, Coach Brown, I guess, is the yes-man. The seniors have convinced him and Ms. Bro to put on a staff versus seniors basketball game, so I expect injuries to happen.
You're gonna fall down?
Do what?
You're gonna fall down?
I mean, I'm in a ball, is what I'm gonna do. Anyway, but that is Wednesday. We, because we're on final schedules, so we get out a little bit earlier, so that's Wednesday after school on, next Wednesday. I think, let's all have band concert tomorrow, academic, academic awards on the fourteenth, color guard showcase on the sixteenth.
Nothing going on?
Done and done. That's right. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Besant. Y'all staying busy.
Hey, Ms. Besant, do you know how many kids have got grown from graduating on the Next You deal since we first started?
Oh, we started with just like five.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a few.
I think this was the largest graduation they ever had. That was one of the.
Yeah, and that's just incredible money that the DCOA invests into our kids.
That's super cool.
Yeah, and they're gonna, adopting, I say adopting, they're gonna take on cybersecurity for us, and so where those kids get some, a lot of times it's tuition, and so that's how their gold credit will be paid for, and we're adding that, the airline technician program is studied, and I think they're adding that to their program also.
Very cool.
Awesome, yeah.
Good.
Thank you all.
Okay. And graduation?
In your package, you've got information about the baccalaureate and graduation. Baccalaureate's this coming Sunday at two. Mr. Besant is gonna fill in for me. I'm headed to look at an absentee program in the Houston area, so I'm gonna be there early on Monday morning, so I'm probably leaving, so I'll probably miss that. High school graduations Friday, May twenty-third, seven o'clock at Taylor County Expo Center. I think Brad, you've got a senior, so if you'd like to, we'll, we can, it takes us about five minutes to talk about that generally, so, I mean, just come down and we'll get you lined out about fifteen till seven, and then I think Mike's also in that, so.
All right, summer board workshops?
Summer board workshops are also listed. Basically, during the summer, we, we lead off with a five o'clock budget workshop, and then followed by the regular board meeting at six-thirty. The, the one change is that last Monday in August where we have the special board meeting to adopt the budget, tax rate, et cetera. So be sure to get those on your calendar.
All right. We are moving into executive session.
Y'all appreciate everybody coming tonight. We do have Brian back there. He was taking notes feverishly, I believe. He'll be, he'll be joining us next month.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
Okay. Mr. Ed, I'm one of the.
Hi, y'all.
Hey, y'all.
You're good.
You're good. Thank you.
Five o'clock.
You're doing okay?
I'm fine.
You did some love.
I think we're okay.
Back three.
Something we really, we really have somebody.
Yeah.
About plus six.
We did.